I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, August 19th, 2024, to order at this time. And we'll ask Janelle Galloway, Assistant County Manager, to provide or lead us in the invocation, followed immediately with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Direct this meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity. Guide our thoughts and actions to accomplish our work and goals this day. May your blessings be upon us always. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize a couple of folks that are here with us tonight. Rick Grant Alderman from North Topsail Beach and Sheriff Chris Thomas in the back as always. Good to have both of y'all here with us. Did we miss anyone else from elected officials around the county? We appreciate y'all being here today. Thank you very much. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue in which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. Now, we need a motion to adopt-
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am, sir.
Motion to amend the agenda. Presentation, "In God We Trust," signed, which would be item four. Item six, which would be general items, is Resolution 24-018, approving legislative goals, submission of such goals to North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for adding the "In God We Trust" sign presentation to the agenda, an item number one, or four, and then item number six would be Resolution 24-018, approving the legislative goals and submission of such goals to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to amend the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
And a second to approve as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. The agenda has been adopted and amended, and we are moving to item two is a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda has been approved. So now we'll move to item three. Mr. Smitherman, public comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've had two citizens that have signed up to speak. The first one, oh, it's actually a group, Onslow County Child Support. If you could, please state your name.
My name is Tammy Pearson. I'm with the Onslow County Child Support Office at 430 Dolphin Drive here in Jacksonville. And we are here today representing the child support program, and every August is Child Support Awareness Month. So we wanted to be here just to talk a little bit about the child support program. In 1995, President Clinton then proclaimed August as Child Support Awareness Month. So today, we still recognize that. Counties continue to collaborate with many public and community agencies to stress the importance of child support. Working with our county partners in the community helps to ensure the future of families in North Carolina. That's one of the reasons we wanted to be here, because it all includes each of you, and we really appreciate everything you do for the child support program. As child support professionals, we continue to provide the best possible assistance to all parties by delivering fair and consistent services. Child support professionals work diligently to establish paternity, locate, and enforcement for all parties they assist. Our hope is that bringing about extra focus on this subject, it will provide everyone who deals with child support issues more support and greater ability to deal with any problems that may arise with regards to their payments. And I'd like to introduce Veronica Pinion. She's our project manager for the Onslow County Child Support Office.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening. With the state fiscal year that ended the 30th of June, I just wanted to share a little bit about what we did for the families of Onslow County. We have over 6,921 cases in total, and 6,351 of those cases have an order in place. This led us into our state fiscal year with over 91% of our cases under an order. Over the past few years, the total collections in child support have been on the decline in all states. This year, the staff of the Onslow County Child Support Office collected more than $19.8 million, exceeding our state goal by 11%. We continue to work with our county partners to ensure that we give the best possible service to the families of Onslow County. As Ms. Pearson has previously seen mentioned, we work to collaborate with many of our public and community agencies to provide the help that citizens of Onslow County need to provide a safe nurturing environment for their families. Our community liaison, Simeon West, reaches out to work with our stakeholders and our partners to assist us in being able to help more families that we serve. Thank you again to the Commissioners, the court personnel, the Sheriff's Department, Department of Social Services, and there's many more agencies that help us and support us in what we do for our families. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next speaker is Betty Allen.
The question that I have-
Please, Ms. Allen, if you could come up to the microphone, please.
Just right up to him. Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Betty Allen, and I have a question. When we have meetings concerning Jacksonville and this area, we never, the people that live in this area, never know anything about the meetings. We have mailboxes and addresses right next door, but we never hear anything about any of the meetings that are happening here. When we hear about the meetings, it's from our cousin that lives in New York, Kansas City, Mississippi, and everywhere else. My question is, why don't we, the neighbors, get a notification of the meetings that are happening here that concern us as well?
Ms. Allen, I know you're asking us a question, but according to our rules of procedure, we won't be able to answer those questions. We will look at comments at the end of the session-
Okay.
-or end of the meeting, but what we will do is, we'll ask you to meet with one of our people here and try and get some of this answered for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all for tonight's public comment section.
All right. And I'll reiterate that to Ms. Allen, is that the end of the meeting, we'll get you in touch with someone that'll be able to answer those questions for you. So we'll move right into item number four, which is public hearings, and we'll start. Mr. Smitherman?
Actually, Mr. Chairman-
The presentation.
I'm sorry. We're with the presentation first. Glad everybody's keeping up with it. So we'll start with the presentation of the "In God We Trust."
I want to begin by passing around this booklet, the history of "In God We Trust." Wrote a history that I'd like to have, give as a gift to each of you, including the county managers, assistant county managers, different ones, and also, Sheriff, we offer the "In God We Trust" decals as well, and we'd like to present these, if you could. This will give you, show you the type quality. I'd like to have those back after the presentation, if I could. The quality of the lettering that we offer. My name is Rick Lanier. I'm former Davidson County Commissioner, Field Director for the U.S. Motto Action Committee, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight, and this is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties that are voting yes to display our national motto, "In God We Trust," in and on their governmental buildings. I served as County Commissioner in Davidson County from 1998 to 2002, at which time I were brought before a Board of Commissioners to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" on the exterior of the governmental center, but since it's been added also to the courthouse. Displaying the motto gives ceremonial honor to public occasions and expresses confidence in our society. These great words have been used on our U.S. currency since 1864, and this inspiring slogan is engraved above the Speaker's seat in the U.S. House of Representatives and above the door to the entrance of the U.S. Senate Chambers, in the U.S. Senate. On July 30th, 1956, during the Dwight D. Eisenhower administration, the U.S. Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as our official national motto of the United States of America. Thus, displaying the motto is legal right protected by our First Amendment. On November 1st, 2011, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, 396 to 9, to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our nation motto. Congressman Randy Forbes of Virginia sponsored the resolution in part because some have mistakenly stated that "E Pluribus Unum" is our national motto. Most importantly, the resolution specifically encourages the placement of the motto in and on all governmental buildings, from courthouses to school classrooms. A recent survey shows that 87% of all Americans still support the display of our national motto. This is our nation's identity, and rightly so. It's the very basis of our form of government. John F. Kennedy stated the guiding principle in prayer, "This nation has been, is now, and shall forever be, 'In God We Trust.'" In times of both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength and guidance to many generations of Americans. And as a grassroots patriotic movement, the U.S. Motto Action Committee stands on solid legal ground. Since Davidson County paved the way in 2002, not one legal challenge has been raised to any county or town hall. We just had Granite Quarry Town Hall in Rowan County to vote August 8th, which made 51 town halls. With a vote here tonight, it'll be 71 out of 100 counties. This effort is totally legal, there's nothing to challenge. And the greatest thing of Commissioners is 100% of the cost comes from private citizens, no cost to the government body. And you, I've said where you are, and when you get something of this magnitude offered free of charge, that's awesome. All across our country, elected officials are quickly embracing the opportunity to display our great national motto. Displaying the motto will serve as a perpetual reminder of our godly heritage as a country. Elected officials like you are showing a commitment to the values that our country was founded upon. And I want to thank you in advance for your vote yes, and I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time. And before I do, I just want to ask you, Chairman Foster, is your son still system up in Raleigh? I met him up there, fine young man, and-
I appreciate it, but he's here in the county now.
Oh, is he? Oh, so he come to work for Daddy, huh? I got you. I got you. And I appreciate Commissioner Bennett helping facilitate getting us here for this meeting tonight. I'd be glad, as I say, to answer any questions that you might have.
Some questions?
I got no questions. I don't think you're going to have a problem with this board. As far as "In God We Trust," that's our country's motto. I believe that. I think it should be behind us. I think it's on our dollar bill. It's on our monetary or our coins and stuff like that. And I'm here to tell you openly that, you know, anybody that challenges that, that's their right. You know, they can say what all they want to, but this country was founded on that principle, and we should honor that, not only to ourselves, but to our forefathers before us. And I actually support this 150%, and I think it's a neat thing that we're doing. It needs to be put out there to let people know, "In God We Trust." Just a little, when I was in law enforcement, we used to make a joke, it said, "In God We Trust, all others we polygraph." But I don't think we're going to have to do that here. I appreciate that presentation.
As you see in this rotating display, I appreciate your tech guy, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name. I can claim old timers, approaching 72 years old, so I forget sometime, but I appreciate him facilitating, getting this moved over to this rotating display. As you can see, we have many displays. Right now, we're right around 275 displays on these 121-plus government entities. Some cases, they put three or four different locations, so. So that's, the only thing limits the places that you want to put it is your choice. You decide, I want to make it clear, that you decide the size, color, the font, and the location or locations that you want to place it.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion? Do we need to make a motion? Or- Because there's nothing on, you need a motion on this?
There's a presentation, but I don't think we need a-
No action.
I would think, if you want to move forward, a motion to approve, moving forward with this, and we'll bring back the actual contract and the locations-
A motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Other than any discussion, as we look forward to getting this back out to you and put here. So all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lear. We appreciate you coming in and presenting tonight.
And I'm sure some of you know, one of our board members, members, past president in, well, I get the acronyms. I'll just say, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Fred McClure, he sends his greetings to you. He's on our Board of Directors. So I appreciate this yes vote tonight, and I guess I'll reach out to you guys at a later date. Thank you so much. With your permission, I'm going to drive two hours back to my house at Ocean Isle.
I understand. Thank you very much, sir, and be safe in your travels.
Thank you.
Now that I have the-
I believe he wants these emblems that are up here, these letters?
Yes. Yes.
Sir. Mr. Lanier.
Mr. Lanier, we've got the letters for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you said you wanted them back.
Please, gentlemen, with me.
Oh, fantastic. Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir.
Now we'll move into public hearings.
We've got four public hearings tonight. Three are resignings, and the fourth is a public hearing on our Onslow Horizon 2040 Plan, and our-
Planning and Development Director Carter Metcalf will be coming forward to lead us through these four items.
Good evening, Board. First item before you tonight is the Peterson rezoning request, P R E Z 2024, number nine. The applicant and owners are Evan and Eve Marie Peterson. So you take an overview of the request. It's from residential eight, manufactured to rural agriculture, or R A M to R A. One tax member, one tax map number in question, 724-34, is located on Clayton James Road in the Jacksonville Township. The rezoning area is 6.43 acres, and the property is currently farmland and a little bit forested, as we'll take a look at in a little bit. If we look at an overview of the services, there is a four-inch unwasse water line along Clayton James Road, as well as many of the nearby properties are served by individual septic systems. The fire service is for Hawes Run Fire District with an ISO rating of four. And the most recent traffic count we have is from 2021 on Hawes Run. The traffic count was 2,400. Staff estimates the capacity above 13,000. Schools serving the property are Southwest Elementary, Dixon Middle School, and Dixon High School. Here you can see the zoning request before you, so the majority of the properties in the area are R-8M, and that is in the pink color, while the green color is the rural agriculture designation. Take a look at the two zoning districts. R A M has a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily residential development, as well as specifically manufactured housing. This is in urbanizing areas of the county that have access to the necessary transportation and utility infrastructure. Compared to R A M, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. And the purpose of rural agriculture is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating a limited low-density single-family and limited commercial uses. When we look at the current comprehensive plan, the one adopted in 2009, designated the future land use as agriculture forestry, or AF for short, and it's to preserve large areas in which most lands have a high potential to be actively farmed or forested in an economically sustainable manner. Here you can see the future land use map at the time, kind of the break in the designation was Hawes Run Road, and that area to the south was agriculture forestry, while then to the northwest, certainly then the north, was rural residential. We take a look at the environmental conditions. There is, there are some blue line streams on the property there to the rear, and then you can see, oh, sorry, I thought the aerial was next, but we'll get to that. So reasonableness in the public interest, the proposed rezoning could be considered reasonable due to the subject property being adjacent to rural agriculture and with rural agriculture aligning with agriculture forestry. It's consistent with the character of the area and several policies in the comprehensive plan. Look at Planning Board met on June 6th, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present for that meeting, and no citizens spoke against it. No military impacts were presented either. Now to the aerials. So you can see there, along the rear of the property is where the creek area is. Up front there, there is a little bit of that farmland, and those parcels there immediately to the east, while they appear vacant in this picture, they have been developed. And you can see there, those long rectangular parcels. And you can see that very well here in this picture. This is a picture of the site. So the site is there behind those duplexes, and there's a stretch of duplexes there that go along Clayton James Road, is the Courtney Mays subdivision. And then to the right, that is an adjacent farm field. So where you see the county vehicle, that is the access, that is the subject parcel, and then as well, the remnant of it behind. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment, P R E Z 2024, number nine, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for this rezoning, Peterson rezoning, and as that no one has signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to the Board for its consideration.
Did we want to offer opportunity for those that didn't get to sign up to speak at this time? I know we've done that in the past. Is that something?
Chair's discretion.
Okay. Just come to the microphone and state your name.
I'm new to this, sorry. Hey, Chairman Foster. I own-
Can you state your name real quick, and then we'll get right on-
Jeff Bethune.
Thank you.
I own, my wife and I own 29 acres northeast, northwest of that 6.4 acres, and it being for A M, those, the duplexes, all behind them are leach fields, and then behind that is the 6.43 acres that just sold recently, I'm guessing, to the Petersons. However, those two branches that run through there, they run into a pond on the proposed 6.43 acres to rezon. So is it, like, how do I find out what they're trying to do and the purpose of rezoning from R A M to rural agriculture, and how's that going to affect the land and the branches that run through my property into theirs, if they're going to be farming it? It can present a flood problem. I went out there during the Hurricane Debbie, and it wasn't that bad, but depending on what is done on their side in the branches, it could stop up and change the flow of water on my wife and I's land.
Okay. I think that would be something Carter to address at another time, or?
Right. I think in this gentleman up there, Mr. Chairman's standing up as well, but Carter may have an idea that's typically something that during the rezoning process, since it's a straight rezoning, we don't have you consider, but oftentimes, the planning department knows of what's going on.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jim.
Carter, okay. Sir, come on up.
And while he's coming up, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, the rezoning allows all permitted uses in R A, and the applicant is not required to disclose any plans on the property, although there may be plans disclosed incidentally to Mr. Metcalf.
Right. Perfect. Thank you, sir. State your name, sir, please.
My name is Evan Peterson. Peterson's for the property rezoning. Good evening, members of the Board. I just wanted to come up here and kind of let that gentleman know that I can answer his questions if he wants to after, but I just wanted to make known that we are the Petersons, and we're just trying to rezon, just to make a home. So if that makes any sense or clears anything up, we can talk after. And also, the reason for the rezoning is we needed to have a place for not only me and my wife, but also her mother and father. She takes care of her father. He's a Vietnam veteran, 100% disabled. She's his caretaker. So we need to either be in the same house or a adjoining house. So where we are right now is not big enough for all of us, and that's the purpose of us purchasing this land, so that we could possibly do that. And we would have to, reading all the laws and everything, get the property rezoned so that we could build a structure that we could all live in. So that's just the purpose of the rezoning.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for taking that opportunity to do that, and I believe that's the last speaker that we'll have, so we appreciate you coming up, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I think, Mr. Chairman, we should just state for the record that we now close the public-
Yes, perfect.
Motion to approve.
About a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, fantastic. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Metcalf, you're still up.
Yes, sir. All right, the next rezoning item is the Emerald Coast rezoning, or P R E Z 2024, number 10. The applicant is Tidewater Associates Incorporated, and the owner is Emerald Coast Incorporated. So look at an overview of the request. It's from rural agriculture to residential five. One tax map number in question, 1319-127. It's located at 133 Norris Road in the Swansboro Township. This rezoning area is 2.09 acres, and the property has a little bit of forested area to it, but it's mostly just a vacant piece of property. Look at the services for an overview. Six-inch unwasse water main along Norris Road, and then a six-inch unwasse sewer force main as well along Norris Road. Fire service for the area is from Swansboro Fire District within ISO rating of five. nearest traffic count that staff could analyze came from West Corbett Avenue, also known as NC 24, at a trip count of 29,000 in 2019. Staff estimates the capacity of close to 30,000. Schools servicing the property is Swansboro Elementary, Swansboro Middle School, and Swansboro High School. So we take a look at the zoning map. There are a variety of colors. However, most of these colors are in Swansboro's jurisdiction and are not subject to the unincorporated area. The unincorporated area are the bright lime green colors, or rural agriculture color, as well as that light blue on community business. And we'll see this more clear in a later map. But there's only a small section of Norris Road that's within our jurisdiction. Most of these categories are the towns' jurisdiction and their zoning categories. So we look at the rural agriculture designation, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and its- its purpose is to maintain that rural development pattern. That preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density, low-density single-family residences. So we look at residential five as a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and it's to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily residential developments in urbanizing areas of the county that have access to the necessary infrastructure to support development at that scale. There's two future land use designations from, again, the current comprehensive plan versus medium-density residential, or M D R. This category is to provide for stable predominantly single-family residential areas and planned multifamily developments. And as well, there's a small strip of conservation, and it's to accommodate environmentally sensitive areas such as those that might be areas of environmental concern or flood plains. Here's the current future land use map, and the gray is the non-participating, and it's all within Swansboro's direct planning jurisdiction, or E T J. And then you can see that darker blue, and the very edge, there is a tiny bit of conservation along the very back of those properties. You can't even see the conservation category over the red outline. So it's a very small area. Then you can see there is a nearby stream of Cartwell branch that does go along that area, hence where the conservation category came from. Look at reasonableness in the public interest. Could be considered reasonable due to the subject property being consistent with the character of the area and nearby uses. Several policies of the comprehensive plan that would support that, such as increasing the variety and type of housing. Proposed rezoning could be considered unreasonable because the future land use map as designated medium-density residential would not be corresponding to residential five. The requests would then not be supported by a variety. There are policies 13 and 36 in the comprehensive plan detailing you would want a transitional buffer between commercial uses and residential uses. Look at the Planning Board's recommendation. They met on June 6th, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present, and there were two members or two citizens that spoke on the request, and a letter was submitted. And the discussion really focused around the Swansboro Moose Lodge, which is located just up the road, made concerns around their ongoing shooting that they do out there, and if they would be able to continue with any sort of new developments nearby. Of course, plane staff defers because the shooting ordinance is under the authority of the sheriff. No military impacts were presented, though, during the Planning Board meeting. Here you can see the property there, right behind kind of the schools. As you're going into Swansboro, it's this little strip right there highlighted in red. You can see the property is currently vacant. Again, some sparse vegetation there on the site, which you can see better here. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment, P R E Z 2024 number 10, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, we will open the public hearing. We do have one citizen that has signed up to speak, Junior Freeman, I believe.
Thank you, Commissioners. Junior Freeman, 1008 Lodgeview Ridge Cove Lane, Swansboro. My wife Linda and I are the principals of Emerald Coast Inc. We've had this property for about seven years, and it's, our current zoning, it limits the amount of housing that could be put on that. And also, the staff has done an excellent idea of presentation of all the particulars there. And as it shows on the map, the property bordering us on the west is the baseball softball field for the middle school, and on the north-south side continues with the property of the middle school. And then directly across the road is a couple of residences that are in the E T J, but most of the Norris Road is all residential there and not in any farm area. I'd appreciate any assistance you can do with us and consideration. Thank you. I'll be here if any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, can I ask Mr. Metcalf a question? Can you tell us what the Swansboro, what looks like M H S zone is, how that's described?
I would have to do some further research into that to make sure I was correctly understanding their code, because we don't have that designation. I can look into that for you in terms of what that designation does mean, but it would take me a few minutes.
Well, I don't suppose that's necessary, but I appreciate it. Just wondering, since we're budding up against them, whether we're consistent with their, with their zoning, so.
Any other questions? I guess one question would be the shooting, turkey shoot at the Moose Lodge. I don't know if we know the distance and all that, and that impact with the sheriff being here. Of course, that could put him on the spot, not having an image of that right now in the distance. So I don't know if that's something that would be an issue, or that's something they could get permitted for as a fundraiser there.
I believe our current zoning ordinance requires it to be 500 feet away from any dwelling, so you can't shoot within 500 feet.
So I don't know what the distance is, just out of curiosity. We don't know what the distance would be. Okay.
I did want to note, Mr. Chairman, I got a concerned citizen that called me, and I appreciate their concern. They live close by, and they're concerned about the increased density for the development. But, I mean, it's a Swansboro suburb. It's gonna, it's gonna grow, unfortunately. But I did want to note their concerns.
Any other discussion items or questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Come on back, Mr. Metcalf.
Three or four. All right. Owl Hollow rezoning request, P R E Z 2024 number 11. The applicant is Tidewater Associates Incorporated, and the owners are R D F Investments and Owl Hollow LLC. An overview of the request is a proposed change from rural agriculture to residential 10. There are three tax map numbers in question, 57-92.1, 57-92.2, and 57-93. So a variety of addresses for the property, notably is 5347 Richlands Highway or Highway 258. It's located in the Jacksonville Township, and the total rezoning area across all three pieces of property is 25.63 acres. It's a variety of uses on the property, but predominantly it's farmland and residential. If we look at the water services, there's a six-inch unwasse water main along Richlands Highway. And along the same road, there is a 12-inch unwasse sewer gravity main. Roadstown Fire District is the fire service within ISO rating of four. The most recent traffic count comes from 2019 on Richlands Highway with a trip count of 20,500. Staff estimates the capacity at 34,500. Schools serving the property are Clearview Elementary, Trexler Middle, and Trexler High School. Take a look at the request, or the three subject properties there outlined in red with the crosshatching. The lime green is the rural agriculture designation, while nearby there are some residential 15 We compare the two districts. The purpose of rural agriculture is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density single-family and commercial uses. Minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. Comparatively, residential 10 has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate moderate-density single-family and limited multifamily residential developments in our urbanizing areas of the county that have the necessary infrastructure to support development at that scale. Current comprehensive plan identifies the property's agriculture forestry, which is to preserve large areas of land in which most lands or have a high potential to be actively farmed or forested in an economically sustained manner. Here you can see that dark blue color is the agriculture forestry designation. And there's no environmental areas of concern such as blue line streams or regulated flood zones on the property. There may or may not be wetlands, but that would be subject to development review. Look at reasonableness in the public interest and may be considered reasonable due to subject property being consistent with the character of the area, as this is a growing residential area of the county, and consistent with three policies in the comprehensive plan detailing our prioritization of increasing variety of housing and type. The proposed rezoning could be considered unreasonable due to the subject property not aligning with the future land use map, as residential 10 is not a corresponding category to agriculture forestry. Planning Board met at July 11th, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant was present and spoke to it, and no citizens spoke on the request. And no letters or emails were received either. No military impacts were presented during the Planning Board meeting. Here you can see overview of the site. See, again, close by the road, there are a few residences, and then in the back transitions to more farmland, and there is some scattered vegetation. Here you can take a little bit of a closer look to see where some of the dwellings are. And then here's a picture from the road of one of the properties there. And again, you can see a lot of the residences up front within the fields are behind them. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment, P R E Z 2024 number 10, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, we'll open the public hearing, and we have one speaker that has requested to appear, and that is Paul Hopkins, Jr.
My name is Paul Hopkins, Jr. I own the property behind, they're trying to rezone. And I don't want it rezoned to residential, because we already got too much traffic in our area and too many houses. There are 66 houses across the street from me, and they're building 39 next door to me. And it's, you can't even get out on Catherine Lake Road anymore without waiting three to five minutes. And also, this land they want to rezone, I believe, has a, not an aquifer, but water shed on it. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for its consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question for Carter. Are you aware of anything regarding the watershed that Mr. Hopkins was just mentioning? I mean, I'm assuming that you do, and it was maybe not.
Absolutely. I mean, there are some ditches on the property. They appeared at first glance to be, you know, farm ditches. By evidence, there is no immediate stream on our G I system. At the same time, any sort of development that would occur on the property would have to go through stormwater review, which at that point, they do absolutely consider the watershed and any, you know, water that would be draining into that tributary. So that would have to be permitted. They would do soil and erosion control as well. So there is a lot of environmental studies that are done through the development of any sort of project.
Thank you. I appreciate you getting that on the record.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Smithman? I think we got Mr.-
We're going to bring up Carter one more time. This will be the official public hearing for the comprehensive plan revision.
The final item before you tonight is the Onslow Horizon 2040 Plan, which is the proposed new comprehensive plan for the county. It's also referred to as Horizon 2040 for short. Number is Comp 2024 number one. The applicant is Onslow County Planning and Development Department. So as we begin talking about Onslow Horizon 2040, it's been a process long in the making. This has been a long time coming, and over two years of development. And we're going to get into the nuts and bolts of the plan, but before we do that, we'll start looking at what is the importance of having a comprehensive plan? So we are legally required to have a plan in two different ways. 1974, North Carolina passed the Coastal Area Management Act, which required all 20 coastal counties to have a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan often referred to as KAMA or KAMA Land Use Plan from that act of that name. Now, in 2020, they passed the General Statute of 160D, and that statute requires us to have a comprehensive plan if we want to regulate zoning. And we have specific elements in that plan. And so part of today is continuing to fulfill that requirement. We have had a KAMA land use plan, and this is simply a new one, a new update to our planning efforts in the county. As well, it is the responsibility of local government to use comprehensive plans, as they are a good practice. They are very useful tools to help us guide growth in the county, specifically with rezoning requests like the other three you've had tonight. They help inform us on whether or not a specific request is in line with the vision that we have set forth as the county. And we take a look, before we, again, get to the nuts and bolts of the plan, we'll discuss our public engagement that we have done across these two years. So after we received the mandate to engage with the plan, we hired a consultant, and then through that consultant, created a project website, which has been up the entire time, and linked off of the Onslow County main page for a period of time, and then as well also plannings. We had on there opportunities for citizens to engage and let us know how they wanted to see the county grow, but then also, once we had the draft, they could go on there and provide comment to us as well. We did a community survey and had over 415 responses on that survey. And then, as well, before we even started drafting the plan, did three drop-in meetings, one in Richlands, one in Swansboro, and one in Seats Ferry, where citizens could come out and speak to us and what they wanted the county's future to look like. Then our consultant went around and met individually with key stakeholders in the community, and we created a steering committee with different key partners that would help have buy-in on helping us execute the plan. After the plan was drafted, we did three more drop-in meetings, and across all six of our drop-in meetings, we had over 100 people come out and talk to us. We did a short video series and put that up on the county's YouTube page, providing information on the plan, and we did postcard mailings. So did every property owner that did not live in the county but owned property in the county. We sent them a postcard to make sure that they were aware of the plan, and this was over 8,000 postcards that we sent out. So we did not send out to every property owner in the county, but tried to go above and beyond our statutory requirements to make sure that people knew, and we also posted it in the newspaper as well. And we take a look at the plan's components. There's three main sections. There's existing conditions, which tells us how the plan, or how the county is today. We look at how we're going to implement the vision for the future in the implementation plan section, and then the future land use strategies and how we're planning to use land moving forward. We'll briefly look at the existing conditions. We've broken down in three areas. Community characteristics highlights key aspects of our county as it relates to demographics. We're the youngest county in North Carolina, and then as well, by 2050, we'll have 70,000 additional new members of our community. We're growing at 15.1% compared to the state's average of 9.5. We take a look at land use influences on the county. So how are we using land? We did it in a variety of ways, from charts and graphs. You can see the graph there showing our housing stock. We've built 42.6% since the year 2000. But we also use maps, and then showing how do we move around the county, such as looking at our average daily traffic counts of both pedestrian and trucking as well. And we took our environmental influence as well and took a look at them, and we mapped those out, and you can see our fragile areas of environmental concern, as well as also the- how storms would impact us through slosh models as well. So we really tried to take a holistic look at both how our community is made up of people, the physical environment, and the natural environment. And so across 170 pages of the plan, we really took a deep dive and look at the county before we even started to look at the future. And our future is anchored by a vision statement proposed in the plan that Onslow County will grow as a balanced community, and it will respect our natural resources, coastal heritage, rural culture, and our positive military influence and diversified economy. And when we keep all of those things in balance, we will create a community of choice in coastal North Carolina. We already are, but we will be continuing to advance that vision. How we get there is broken up by goals, objectives, and strategies. The goals are big lofty visions for the county, but in order to make that practical and happen, we set up objectives for planning staff and partners. And out of each objective, we put some on-the-ground strategies to make sure that we will implement this plan. This is not going to be a plan that'll sit on a shelf, but rather a guidebook for planning staff to begin to implement. So we look at our plan goals. There are six. We will pursue land use compatibility to make sure that we are promoting harmony in our community. We're going to make sure that any new development, we're going to have the infrastructure necessary to support it. We're going to be mindful and mitigate our natural hazard areas where we can. We're going to make sure we keep a high water quality, increased quality of life, and ensure that all new development will be as high quality as possible. Now, part of that plan is we really took a serious look at the county, and our methodology was both from community input through survey, physical meetings and conversations, but also expert statistical analysis. I mentioned earlier, we hired a consultant that do land use plans for military communities all across the United States. And so they put together some very complicated maps, like ones you can see, that showed opportunities and constraints. Again, we thoroughly looked at the entire county, and out of that, we developed a future land use map and created, hopefully now, our new future land use categories, and we're going to walk through them in detail. And then we'll take a look at how they're arranged on the map. So some of the categories are the same from the current one, and some are new. So similarly to the previous plan, we have agriculture forestry, which is preserve and protect that rural character in our agriculture and forestry lands. Go back to that rural character of the county. We want to make sure to preserve it. We created new categories like the airport compatibility area. We have significant investment in the Albert J Ellis Airport, and it's a vital part of our community and economic growth. We want to make sure to protect that area and promote businesses and development that would benefit by proximity. And as well, we want to conserve our conservation lands as well. We look at our economic development. We want to diversify our economic tax base and bring more employers here to the county. We also created a new category of infrastructure, energy, and extraction. Every piece of property that has that designation, that is what they do today. They are already those uses. We did not identify any new locations, but simply wanted the board to be mindful that that is what's going on on those pieces of property. As well as we identified the areas that are there under military with our great partners at Camp Lejeune and New River Air Station. As well, we also identified where the municipality control areas are. And we broke down our residential growth into a series of different densities. The lowest is rural residential for low-density single-family, progressing into suburban growth for our moderate-density residential developments, then moving up to urban growth with our most urbanized areas. All of them would have complementing levels of commercial density as well. And then two new categories, which are designed to echo categories from the Sneets Ferry Community Plan. So Sneets Ferry Community Plan had the village center category, and we revamped it to the village category. The goal is to create a sense of place for the Sneets Ferry community, create a walkable area, and again, really create this sense of a village. And this is from direct feedback that we heard from over 80 Sneets Ferry residents, that they wanted this type of place created. And the other category was in the Sneets Ferry Plan as well, and again, we revamped it, and it's echoing forward now. With the waterside community, it was waterside living. The goal of this category is to promote residential development that's in kind to what's already existing and respectful of its proximity to the ICW and our more environmentally sensitive areas. That way, we're continuing to protect our commercial fishing operations and our working Those are all of the categories, but how they're laid out on the map is our urban growth categories are closest to the municipalities to promote growth near them. It's cheaper for services to be extended, whether done by a developer or by the county. Suburban growth after that, and then our rural residential. Ringed by an agricultural forestry U essentially around the top of the county, we're preserving our most productive forestry lands and agricultural. Airport compatibility there surrounding the airport, with our infrastructure, energy, and extraction spread throughout, has those uses are. And in Sneets Ferry, we have the village category centered on the four corners interchange, which is their 210 and 172. And then our waterside community category going there along the ICW, and again, those most sensitive areas. The Sneets Ferry Plan obviously was just in Sneets Ferry, but we took that idea and continued to extend it along our coast. And we'll take a second just to briefly look at each area, a closer look. So here is what we identify as the north region. We split the map up into three just to make it easier to look at. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider this proposed new comprehensive plan for Onslow County. And we're very thankful for the board's opportunity that was given to the planning department to work with our consultant, work with the community to develop this plan, and we're excited for the new horizon that it will set for Onslow County. This concludes the staff presentation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wait, hold up.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. We're so excited.
Let's go to Mr. Smithman and...
We'll now open the public hearing, and as that there are no citizens signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing, and the board may make any motion it desires.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Carter, I want to thank you and your staff. I'm not going to ask any questions. It's been a long time coming. We've had these discussions with you, me, Ben, and all these Board of Commissioners up here, and you know, Sneets Ferry has really been concerned about this issue, and I'm glad we got to it. And thank you for all the hard work and the staff and our manager and everybody else involved. Thank you.
And I would say I appreciate what you did, too. I was at some of the public meetings, and I know that you reached out to other concerned groups in the, in the community. I think it's a good plan. Thank you.
And I'll just be the third one to speak and say, coming into office, this was a real hot button for me, and so I didn't even know at the time that it was in the beginnings of the throes of all the work that you did. So thank you to your staff for doing a really thorough and thoughtful process, and I just appreciate so much that you will give this commissioner confidence as she has to vote on future rezoning. So thank you very much.
Any further discussion? And kudos to Mr. Metcalf. Good job. We know the amount of time it takes for you and your staff to do that, so we appreciate your effort. With that being said, hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. So now we'll move to item seven. Mr. Smithman with some appointments.
Actually, first item.
Item six.
I am on a roll today.
Get him, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa. Item six.
Before we get to those appointments, Mr. Chairman, we would like to present Resolution 24018, which is proposed as the legislative goals of Onslow County's Board of Commissioners for the coming 2024-25 legislative year. These have been before you, I think, in three different iterations over the past few weeks. They've broken out into two sections, local initiatives, and I will, I will speak to those specifically, and then quite a few statewide goals that outline our interests in working with the General Assembly to improve law, process, bureaucratic procedure for the benefit of our citizens. But we have three local initiatives that the Board of Commissioners desires to seek. The first is legislation to approve an additional 1/4 cent sales tax. The second is a goal to work collaboratively with our state and federal delegation and to meet with that delegation at least annually. And our third goal is to seek legislation to authorize the board to delegate its legislative authority in select cases to our planning commission to both speed up, well, mostly to speed up deliberation of the proposals that come before you. Many of those would be approved at the planning commission level instead of the board level if that legislation was approved. And I'm, several of us in the whole executive leadership team and others have worked on this, and we're happy to answer any questions you have this evening if they exist.
The local initiatives would be as separate items. They wouldn't be included in the package sent to the legislative goals conference, correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, so now we need a motion.
So moved.
A second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to bring this up to be on the record because I had a call about it today. It seems like this is a forever, I should say, never-ending topic of discussion across the county and the state for that matter. But one thing to note on our list here is in general government that we actively, and I would say not just our county, but the, the entire group of commissioners in North Carolina Association of County Commissioners really does look at supporting some kind of attention given to these orphan roads. And so one thing that we're going to support is passage of House Rule 732, or House 732 Orphan Roads DOT Maintenance Program to address the roads that are not transitioned to NC DOT by developers and left in disrepair. We're very aware that there are many of them in our county and actually across our state, and I just want to go on the record for any, any citizens that are watching, that we are doing what we can do to advocate for that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. I just want to say that I see this as a continuation of what we've been doing for the last year, when we're actually looking to the future instead of trying to recover from the past. Our comprehensive land use plan, our legislative goals, all this is very progressive, futuristic kind of, kind of things that we need to be working for for Onslow County, so we appreciate that.
Yep.
Further discussion? I will just go back to what Commissioner Carpenter said. The orphan roads has been a, we receive many calls on that, and that orphan roads are the, the developments have been left with no one taking care of the roads, and they become in just horrible shape and horrible condition. As much as we would like to be able to step in and try and finance those, there's about 17 to 19 of those in Onslow County, and, and there could be more than that. And just in order for the state or the DOT to take those over, they have to come up to the state standards, which would require that financing to be anywhere from $1 million to $5 million for each of those developments, which would move Onslow County into, a low estimate would be, you know, 40 to 50 million dollars we would have to put out to bring those up to standard, and those communities to be assessed to bring back and pay that money back. And we're not in a position to put $50 million out into something like that because that would drain our funds to what we need for the future with disasters and things such as that. So we, we will, we will continue to work hard for those communities to bring those roads up to standard as best we can. And public education was one that Mr. Price had thrown in there that is extremely important for your schools, where the state is 60% of your school, community schools are graded on proficiency or passing what they consider. Passing score for that test in 40% is based on growth. If you know your children, when they walk in the classroom at a certain level at the end of the year, if they have grown tremendously, then you know whether they, whether they prove proficient on a state test or not, you know that your child has grown and has shown that growth as they continue through the, the school system. And I think it's more important to see where our children are five years after graduation than how they perform on a test on the Tuesday morning as a 14-year-old whose girlfriend broke up with him on Sunday night. So I think it's more to see where we end up than where we're at as teenagers. It's a good gauge, but I don't think that's where the money should be dependent upon because people work hard for that. With that being said, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. And I'll be a little slower in my move to the next item to ensure that we're at the right one. I have seemed to move quickly tonight and skip things. But we are on item seven, the appointments, and we will be doing that with Mr. Smithman leading us through that with some ballots for appointments to the Onslow County Hospital Authority.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can introduce this matter for you.
Okay.
The Onslow County Hospital Authority, it's scheduled meeting on July 25th, voted unanimously to forward nomination for consideration for reappointment or appointment of terms expiring September 30th, 2024. The Onslow County Hospital Authority is requesting consideration of the listed names below for appointment or reappointment. Seat one, Elizabeth Atkins. Seat seven, Julia Collins. Seat 10, Steve Scarborough. Our seat 13, Virginia Albano. And Mr. Richard McIntosh is submitted as an additional name pursuant to Section 7 of the joint resolution. And once when you all are finished, we will tally those up for you.
What you're witnessing now is the cutting-edge technology of counting ballots at the local level when it comes to appointments. But this way don't cost money. That's right.
There you go. And these documents are open to the public. Anybody that wants to see these documents that we just signed are open to the public also.
The hospital just celebrated its 80th year, and that was a good celebration we had there. And that was a good celebration we had there. Those are still tallying. We did do a ribbon cutting this morning over at the landfill.
Got a hanging child, Chairman.
Uh-oh. It's me. Hey, I was just making sure the process was legit. That's how you keep them on their toes. So, $12 million expansion, Phase 5 of the landfill this morning, which is tremendous and help and support from Senator Lozara. So that's great. And you get in the office, you learn quite a bit about how a landfill operates and what it does for a community. And the science and technology that's involved in it now is unbelievable. That's commentary right now.
Just a nice deflection. One more minute, Mr. Chairman. Stretch it out.
Stretching it out.
I like the way you segue and deflected yourself after all the ridicule. So that was, that was smooth.
Yes.
Nice transition.
Besides him trying to bring up item seven twice.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, for seat number seven, the Board has elected Julia Collins. For seat number 10, Steve Scarborough. Seat number one, Elizabeth Atkins. And seat 13, Virginia Albano.
Thank you very much. So our hospital authority is back in action with appointments. So we appreciate that. And Dr. Penny, Burling Gang deal here for the hospital with us tonight. So that will move us into consent items. We have none for item eight, and we'll move into the manager's comments at this time. Mr. Smitherman?
Well, I was planning on telling you about the great time we had today at the landfill, grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony. It is a big deal. It's a $12 million project. We have about 25 years left on that landfill. We've got 30 years in our rearview mirror. We were in a place where we needed a nice charge, which Senator Lozara gave us, that has rapidly helped us bring our landfill and our landfill equipment up to an excellent standard. And we are operating very well with our 25 or so employees down there, and we appreciate the great attendance this morning. And it was, it was a good event. It was a fun event to be at the landfill this morning. Want to just continue to emphasize the importance of our strategic plan that is being talked about and input coming in throughout the community. We are advertising in many, many locations, creative locations, trying to get as much feedback as possible as the Board deliberates on its plan for the next five years. We will have a presentation on our progress to date at your September workshop. We also are planning a joint meeting with the Planning Board. We have now adopted our new comprehensive plan. Now what's important is that we're on the same page with our planning folks, that the Board and our Planning Board see this document the same way, administers it the same way, shares the same values in how we administer that. And that will be coming up in the next few weeks. And then the final thing I wanted to say, actually, two things I want to say. I want to congratulate two people that have joined our organization since you met last. The first is Stephanie Kane. She was, she was appointed the Director, the Division Director of Emergency Medical Services, and her first day at work was today in her new role. And I understand from chatter she's had a challenging day. It's been a lot of, been a busy day out there. And then the other person, Mr. Kevin Patterson. Kevin, please stand and say hello. This is Kevin Patterson, our new Finance Director. Kevin has tremendous local government experience. Not only has he been a Finance Director, he's a CPA, and he was a county manager in North Carolina for 16 years. So he comes super well qualified, and we're really happy to have him on our staff. So if you haven't had a chance to shake his hand, please introduce yourself, and he'll be with us for a long time. And we're super happy on the third floor about our Finance and HR departments. How about that? That's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
All righty, let's start. Commissioner Scott will let you kick off this evening.
I did last time, but that's okay.
Did you?
No, that's fine.
Sorry.
Planning, been a long time coming. 2014, Sneed's Ferry had a plan. It's finally incorporated into Onslow's plan. We now can be one. That is a big deal for us. We need continuity. We need continued cooperation as we work out some of the kinks. I'm sure that's going to come up. But I'm very excited for the citizens and contractors in Onslow County to know that we have a plan now in place that everybody can actually deal with on an even playing field. And that being said, be safe, be aware of your surroundings, and God bless you all. And we'll see you at the next appointee time.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank this Board and our citizens for allowing me to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference a couple of weeks ago. It was an action-packed three days, and I wanted to mention just a few things. I came away with some insights of some funding opportunities for grants for health issues and for low-income housing. Also attended seminars on artificial intelligence and how it is and can be used and the pitfalls that we'll have to watch out for as it comes along. Also on drone technology, it's pretty amazing what they're doing with drones across the state right now and something that we can hopefully explore and maybe continue to increase. I know the sheriff is working a drone program now. We need to expand that program. Also talked about how to decriminalize mental health and substance abuse and get those people out of our jails. A lot of good ideas about how to do that. And I attended a solid waste seminar to see what other counties across the state are doing with their solid waste. And I tell you, we are so fortunate to have our own landfill. We don't have to haul trash to another county. We don't have to try to figure out what to do with it. We got a place to take care of and we can control. So that is a blessing for all of Onslow County. I also attended a seminar on feral cat control, which is an issue that we certainly have in Onslow County, and they had some really good suggestions. I appreciate the trap neuter release program that we have now and look forward to hearing more about that in our workshop in a couple more weeks. So just wanted to thank everybody and hope you have a good night. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you, everybody, for being here. Carter, I already thanked you earlier on, and I'm gonna do it again. And Ben, you were part of this too. If you come down 24, coming out of Swansboro, coming back to Piney Green, you're gonna see the Sam's Ranch is being destroyed, all those buildings are being tore down. When I went by there today about 12 o'clock noon, the first concrete building was down. And when I came over here tonight, the rest of the buildings were being torn down, all stables and whatnot. It's an eyesore. And what happens a lot of times is if citizens call us about complaints, things that we need to look at and stuff like that, I don't know how long we've been working on this one. Ben, you helped me with it all there on, and Bedcalf, you're the one that are really instrumental. He said he was there at nine o'clock this morning when they came up with the trackhoe and the equipment and started tearing it down. When we have blight like that in the county, we like to get rid of it as much as possible. But the thing about this one is that Walmart owns this property. So it took a long time for you, Carter, to find out how to get up with these people. And then finally, they showed up with you at a meeting. So we have those buildings. So when you have complaints, people call us. The commissioners are there to help out any way we can. Riggs Road, those of you who live toward the Riggs Road area, Hubert, what a blight area that was, we handled that pretty heavily. But we do a lot of things people don't know we do. The other thing is the legislative goals. You heard them talk about the quarter cent sales tax. That is something, when it comes to be, we need you all to vote on that for us, to work forward, and we'll designate where that money's gonna go. That quarter cent sales tax, every citizen in Onslow County pays that. It's not property tax. It's when you go to the stores and every place else, it's an extra quarter. So we have a quarter cent sales tax right now that we approved in 2010. We're only allowed a half percent. So we can get another quarter cent sales tax. There's a lot of people that don't pay taxes in Onslow County. A lot of military people don't. They live on the base. So if they come out in town and use our facilities, they're paying that quarter cent sales tax. When that's gonna come up next year, we're gonna need your help. We need the citizens to work with us on that. So with that, everybody be safe tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Mr. Price?
Just like to remind everyone that our Onslow County Schools is starting back up on Monday, and to be aware of the school buses out and aware of kids waiting for the bus and that kind of thing, so we'll be safe with them. And try to make, find a way to make your way out to high school football game or soccer game or support whatever athletic event that's going on in your local community as well. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. I think most of us were at the ribbon cutting this morning at the landfill, and it was a very exciting event, thankfully not too hot, and we didn't see too much wildlife that needed to be controlled because I guess that's something that goes on out there. But we got these great little cards that had some fun facts about the landfill that I thought I would share because I didn't know this. Yes, the landfill Phase 5 costs $12 million, and guess what? It only lasts for four and a half years. Yikes, that's a lot of trash that we have here in the county. But don't worry because the sixth and seventh phases, which I'm sure will be, you know, only $12 million apiece each, but they're starting in two years. So we've, we're planning ahead, and we're gonna have that taken care of. The other thing that I thought was very interesting, one of the four that were listed here, was that during July 2024, the landfill saw 11,000 patrons. That's a lot of trash. So we are very blessed, as Mr. Bennett said, about having our own landfill here. So just wanted to say congratulations to the women that came and talked about Child Support Awareness Month. They've done a really phenomenal job in making sure that children who need to be provided for are being provided for, and I think that's really something to be praised. And lastly, just, I thought this was really great. First of all, it's so nice to come in here and see so many citizens that are showing up to see what we're doing here. I appreciate that so much, and that was something that I was always hoping for when I was first running for office. But the thing that I love so much was when the gentleman came up that was a neighbor of Mr. Peterson, asking a question, and then Mr. Peterson stood up, and the neighbors met each other here at the rezoning. I just thought that that was really wonderful and, I don't know, made my heart feel good. So anyway, I hope that this encourages other people to start showing up and participating in the community. Have a wonderful week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Vice Chairman Knapp?
Just a couple of things. I want to reiterate what Commissioner Buchanan said about the sales tax. That's probably the fairest and the purest way to make it equitable across the board for people that don't pay property tax, et cetera. But not only does the military people have to pay, other citizens that don't own property don't pay property taxes, but also the outside community from other counties that come here to shop. People from Jones County, Duplin County, Pender County come here because we got a Sam's Club, we have restaurants. They'll contribute to that, too. They visit our beaches, and it's the fairest and most equitable way whatsoever. And I agree with him that we need the citizen's support on this particular issue. If it comes to a referendum or whatever it might come to in voting, we need this quarter cent. It's gonna help us in our ever, in our goal of ever pursuing, the goal of lowering our tax rate, current property tax rate, which we look at every single day, that we're thinking about this. And we want to be able to do that and drop it down even further if we can. Because as you know, a lot of us up here, most, actually, all of us do not believe in raising taxes whatsoever, and that's our main goal. Second, you know, we, a lot of you watched the Paris Olympics, and we talk about heroes and people winning gold medals, silver medals. They did this for their country, they did that. But you know, right here in Onslow County, we have our own heroes, and we forget that. And I was, I had the privilege and honor of being invited to JPD to attend the Medal of Valor presentation to a young officer by the name of Jason Miller, who I know through a mutual friend. I've met him before in the past, and we hit it off, we just kind of bonded. He's a very, very intelligent man, but you know, here's a man that's been working 16 hours a day on his way home, and he comes across a house fire. And without even thinking, he jumped out of the vehicle and ran into that house to save the people in that particular vehicle. And I thought that was very humbling, and it was, I was honored to be there to see him get presented the Medal of Valor because he deserved it, a young officer. Without even thinking, no hesitation, put his life at risk for others and just spontaneously reacted like he was trained to do. Now, he's not a firefighter. He's not trained to run towards fire. He's trained to run towards gunfire, but it didn't matter. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Jason Miller, Jacksonville Police Officer. It was really an honor to watch him do this or to receive this award, and I felt proud. As a retired cop, I felt proud to see a fellow law enforcement officer get such a high award because that's, that's very high indeed, and it's hard to get. And he wasn't looking for any attention, he just reacted. And those are heroes that we have in Jacksonville, to include our Sheriff's Department. We have heroes every day, EMS, firefighters, you know, service members in this town. Make sure you thank them when you see them. Just tell them you appreciate what they do for you. That'd go a long way. The last, the other thing is I want to thank Ben Warren and Janelle for jumping on some things that were brought to my attention by other citizens. And I want to echo again what Paul Buchanan said. There are a lot of things that people don't see what we do as commissioners. You know, we answer phone calls and messages from citizens, and we try very hard to answer them immediately, whether it's an hour, whether it's within 10 hours, we try to answer them if we see the message, and we try to put them in contact with the people that have the information to do their, to do their job or answer their question. For example, we had some animal control issues with Ben. I had another issue with Janelle. I called them, I said, this is what the citizen said. I screenshotted it, gave it to them, and boy, they jumped on it right away and took care of the citizen. Making contact with that citizen, letting them know that the county is listening and we're trying to respond the best way we can. But it also goes to the, he also, what I want to make my point is, is that it's also on responsibility of the citizens as well. Don't feel afraid to contact the commissioner. We're not, we're not sitting up on this dais, you know, overlooking Onslow County and not doing anything. We need to know what's going on. Doesn't matter where you are in this county, if there's something that you want to bring to our attention. Every one of us has our, have our phone numbers listed. We have our emails listed. Contact us because that's how we get information. That's how we find out about things that we're not even aware of. At least we can try to fix the problem. You know, don't be afraid that, you guys elected us. That's what we're here for. We're elected to represent the citizens of Onslow County. Pick up the phone and call us. I don't care where you work. I don't care if you're a county employee or anybody else. If there's something bothering you or you have an issue with, call us. And I guarantee you, every one of us here on this dais will do whatever we can, as hastily as we can, to make sure that we resolve the issue for you. And lately, it's been animal control, it's been some other issues, and animal control is a big issue right now in this county. So just remember that, and like I said, go on the website, you'll get our personal cell phone numbers or email or however to contact you, and we'll definitely respond to your comments. And just one last thing, I just want to say thank you for everybody for coming out. This weekend starts a religious holiday known as college football, so from noon until 18:00 hours, don't contact me because I'll be watching Florida State play. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Congratulations to the promotion for Stephanie. Appreciate what she's done and acknowledging that with that promotion. And then welcome, Kevin, to Onslow County. We're glad to have you here. We have a couple of things on the calendar coming up that I think we need to remind everyone is Friday, the 23rd of August, at the Lejeune Memorial Gardens. The Monford Point Marines will be recognizing many, their annual yearly gathering and celebration of the Monford Point Marines. So that'll be taking place over at Lejeune Gardens on Friday morning at 8:00 a.m. And then Saturday night at the Onslow County Public Library, Main Branch, will be the back-to-school bash. So that'll be taking place from 10:00 to 2:00 over there as the official kickoff to school and getting everybody ready and excited about that. Mentioned the community involvement survey involving the strategic plan and getting information from the citizens. If you haven't had a chance to do that, go to our county website and click there and fill out that survey and get your voice heard as we begin the efforts to build a strategic plan and a vision for the next five years. I know Mr. Dr. Gartner, Facilities and Director-in-Chief there for Onslow County Schools will appreciate this when I share this. All parents, if your child is a K-12 in the Onslow County School System, next Monday's a big day, but September 23rd is a major day as well. You, Onslow County Schools will be sending out the Impact Aid Cards. And those Impact Aid Cards is what determines some of the, or a lot of the federal dollars that the Onslow County School System will receive, recognizing the number of military students that Onslow County School serves and knowing that the county is impacted with different things. The federal government does try and provide money with the number of kids that we have whose families are serving in the military here in Onslow County. So be on the lookout for that Impact Aid Card and get that filled out and turned back in. If it doesn't get turned in, it'll be a loss of money so for the school system as they try and enhance the education of your students. And then, and out here in the crowd tonight, or this, tonight, not this morning, I see Ms. Foskey sitting here with us, and one of her sons, Marvin- for the future of this county and it be as full in the room as it has been tonight. So we thank you for being here.
Hey, Tim.
Yes, sir.
I think we forgot one thing this past week. We went to a groundbreaking, if you would cover that. I forgot about it until I just thought.
Yes.
There were several of us there.
Yes, I thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Pat and Lee Walker led the, led the, the effort in getting a visitor center and restrooms at Lejeune Memorial Gardens. And that groundbreaking took place last week, and that is going to start, and that is a tremendous asset going in there for those of you that have been out there for large, large remembrances and occasions and know facilities, and that will be, that will be coming. And as I finish tonight, it is in God we trust. We've heard that. That's coming. And finally, with all that we've done and all the effort that's been put in, Carter, Ben, David, everyone, Janelle, everyone that's been a part of Onslow County, we are working to continue not only what we've done in the past, but continue to be who we are in the future with Onslow County being the community of choice in coastal North Carolina. With that being said, we need a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
We are adjourned.